The Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement calls this public hearing back to order. It is 2:00 PM on Thursday, January 29, 2015. We had actually called the meeting to order this morning at 9:00, then we recessed after this morning's meeting. With me this morning is, to my left, Senator Frank Uggan, and to his left, Senator Anthony Etta. And the purpose of the public hearing this afternoon is to receive testimony on Bill 20-33, which was introduced by myself, and it's an act to amend Articles 9 and 12 of Chapter 5, Title 5 Guam Code annotated, relative to legal and contractual remedies in Guam's procurement law. The notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and local media on January 22, 2015, and a 48-hour notice was provided on January 26, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so for those who are providing testimony, please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM on Friday, February 6, 2015. Please address the testimonies to Senator Thomas Etta, chairperson of the committee. So I'll go ahead and we'll start off by just briefly introduce the bill. As I stated earlier, Bill 20-33 is actually a reintroduction of Bill 224, which was introduced last term, but was vetoed by the governor on December 31. So what Bill 20-33 does is it addresses the governor's objections that he had specified in his veto message. And in his veto message, he had actually pointed out, without getting too much into the details, but his objections pertain to a provision in Bill 224, which would have allowed a person to be defined as aggrieved if such a person, regardless of notwithstanding his competitive position, the protest of such a person raises issues significant to procurement system or its integrity. So regardless of whether the person's bid was so far out and left field that he never would have been in competition, that person would have nonetheless been able to lodge a protest by virtue of raising issues significant procurement system or its integrity. Bill 20-32 removes that specific provision. The governor also had particular concerns about the issue on automatic stays resulting -- automatic stay of procurement resulting from a -- because a protest has been lodged. And in the current law, automatic stays can be lifted by the chief procurement officer if the chief procurement officer, with written concurrence of the head of the using agency or purchasing agency and the attorney general, makes a written determination that the award of the contract without delay is necessary to protect substantial interests of the government of Guam, or the governor issues a declaration of emergency procurement as authorized by Section 5215 of this chapter. And the governor had objected to the provision in the bill, which would have allowed actually a protestant to be given at least two days to be able to challenge this declaration by the governor. And so that provision was actually removed from -- and Bill 20-33 is now basically Bill -- the previous bill that was vetoed without that provision. The provision that questions the governor's declaration of emergency procurement and its validity, and the provision which gives standing to an individual regardless of competitive standing to be able to lodge a protest. That is the -- basically the long and short of what Bill 20-33 is. Signing up to testify is John M. Pinko from the VA Office and Ms. Doris Brooks from OPA. Mr. M. Pinko is also the chairman for the procurement policy office, correct? Okay, all right. So please step forward and give your testimony. So we start up in the order of sign up, and that's Judge M. Pinko.
Thank you, Senator Etta, Senator Uggan, Senator Etta, Tony Etta also. Thank you for the privilege of testifying today. We have reviewed Bill 20-33 in its entirety and offer the following comments. First of all, Section 5425a, 1B, we have difficulty of the language in line four, which states that a person would have been in a competitive position to be awarded the contract. Thus competitive position here mean that the person is next in line to be awarded the contract if his protest succeeds? Or does it mean that he would be in a competitive position but would not get the contract even if the protest succeeded? The latter is objectionable to us, as the protest procedure is then just a sporting exercise to delay the contract. If the person stands to be awarded the contract, but there are several ahead of him, but his protest would eliminate the people ahead of him, and he stands to get the contract, then this will be all right with us. Next, Section 5425a3. This definition of an interested party is troublesome and should be eliminated. The only time an interested party in this statute is involved is in the settlement or attempted settlement of the protest. So that we're clear on this point, we recommend that line five's reference to interested parties be deleted, and instead we should spell out that these interested parties are the protester and protestee. They are the two parties that should rightfully be involved in settling the dispute. All other parties have no business being a part of settlement discussions. Same comment applies to the use of the term interested parties in line 13.
What page are you looking at? You mentioned 5425a3. That'll be on page two. Of the bill that was introduced?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, because you were making reference to line five and...
Yeah. And then I've mentioned interested party further down?
Correct.
Okay.
That'll be on line 18.
Yes.
Okay.
If the protest is pending before the public auditor or the court has confirmed the validity of such a determination. The public auditor cannot confirm the validity of the governor's determination in an emergency procurement because the Office of Public Auditor is not a separate but coecco branch of government to the governor. How can a lesser government agency check the work of a greater government agency? The Organic Act also provides that the governor is the chief executive of the island and makes decisions for us to decide -- for us, I'm sorry, decisions for the island. This is an impingement on his executive power and may well be called into question in court and be declared inorganic.
So you're making comments then on a existing provision of the law?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's on page six.
Correct.
If these penalties of debarment and suspension have to be truly punitive and to teach someone a lesson to not make a frivolous protest or to avoid doing some contract shenanigans in the future, then the debarment should be for five years, and a suspension should at least be for two years. Having them for periods less than this is a joke, as procurements for certain items often happen but once every two years. 5426e...
And where in particular in 5426 are you referring to?
Line 25. And line 2930.
Page...
Page seven. After the last sentence, we recommend adding, "An adverse decision to the protest shall have the effect of requiring a determination of nonresponsibility in any solicitation in which the protester is participating." This is the logical outcome of the failure of the protest, but more importantly, the same thing that was protested originally could again pop up in subsequent procurement. Next is 5427.
And that -- the last one was on page 10, a new line after -- a new sentence after line 17, correct?
Right.
Okay.
No time limit is set for the decision of the public auditor in all disputes presented to him or her for resolution. All other administrative bodies are given time limits within which to render a decision, and in some cases, if they don't, their inaction can be taken as an adverse action to the protester. Now, fair is fair, so why does the public auditor not have a time period within which to decide the dispute?
I thought there was a 60-day time limit for the public auditor.
It's in our rules.
In your rule.
We say 30 days.
But it's not...
Yes.
It's not part of the law.
It's not part of the law.
It's not part of the law.
Among practicing lawyers, it is known that the public auditor seldom timely in his decisions, given the Office of Public Auditors giving the Office -- give the Office of Public Auditor then a deadline to render a decision, and if his decision is not rendered, then the decision is deemed a negative decision by the protester. It is only fair that they do this. They are an administrative body. How about giving them 45 days in which to render a decision where the protest is deemed denied? I have to pause to find the section I'm trying to highlight here, because my copy was different, slightly different from your copy in terms of pagination. Next one is on page 21, Section 5708 of Article 12. 5708 of Article 12 says, "A contractor may not unilaterally discontinue such an appeal without prejudice, except as authorized by the public auditor." Now, can the Office of Public Auditor force a litigant to continue his lawsuit? Even in the judicial courts, the judicial court cannot force them. This is an administrative hearing. What gives the auditor the power to continue the lawsuit? I think that the litigant may have his own reasons for not maintaining his own lawsuit, which might not be known to the Office of Public Auditor. For example, that he has no case, or that he has a losing case in the end, or there may be other reasons, known and unknown to us, but only him, only he knows about it. The public auditor should not decide for a litigant whether to continue litigation. Section 15, page 22. A new Section 5710 is added to Article 12. This provision essentially renders not and void the duties of the Policy Office, Procurement Policy Office, in promulgating regulations governing the procurement, management, control, and disposal of any and all supplies, services, and construction. Do we want to entrust the Office of Public Auditor with such power? Must the public auditor have such power to be able to perform its duties under this statute? It would appear that the Office of Public Auditor wants total power in the area of procurement. There will be no checks and balances on its power to adjudicate procurement matters. This is troublesome. In conclusion, this bill favors the public contractor too much. It will lead to more contracts being protested, and the healthy effect of contractors keeping the government on track is far too overplayed. This concludes my testimony. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Judge M. Pinko.
Good afternoon, Senator Etta. You have before me my testimony, and with me also today is the hearing -- my hearing officer, Anthony Camacho, who, as you know, throughout the roundtables that we had in the 32nd Guam Legislature, he was the one who substantially prepared all of the testimony on behalf of the bill, because there are certain aspects of it that are very technical. And let me just say this, that I -- with the exception of one, I was surprised also at the veto by the governor, but Anthony has reviewed most of the concerns raised, and I believe that the bill pretty much addresses that, although now hearings -- John M. Pinko's testimony, and I do take deference, umbrage to certain aspects where he said that I'm trying to control power and all of that. That's far from the case. For example, the section about promulgating the rules and regulations, this was something we had said throughout, and it's only specific as to this bill, not anything else there. So there were certain other aspects, but in general, we are supportive of the area of the bill, and because a lot of work has been done, you know, the good Vice Speaker under his chairmanship, and I noticed that the procurement now shifted to you as a responsibility, but a lot of work has been done, because when we had the Procurement Advisory Committee, we were trying to do that, but for whatever reason, you know, that kind of fell by the wayside. The Procurement Advisory Commission is no longer meeting anymore. It's now -- I guess John has shown not -- it's no longer needed. So when this came along, I thought this was an avenue to address certain aspects of this. So overall, not having had an opportunity to really review what his objections were, we have generally no objections to it, but I want to turn it over to Anthony, our hearing officer, because he has been very instrumental in providing and preparing the testimony on all the previous bills that have come before with regards to the procurement, and he is the one most familiar and the one I rely on the most when it comes to these areas. So I'll turn it over to him for additional comment.
Good afternoon, senators. In essence, the OPA, I basically -- the OPA supports the passage of Bill 20-33, reviewing at least the governor's main concerns with the bill. We do see that essentially the main two concerns concerning opening the door for people who are not engaged in the solicitation process to file protests. Likewise, the concerns they had about the additional language concerning the review of declarations of emergency, which would trigger emergency procurements, I believe those have been effectively been removed by the language of Bill 20-33. Likewise, the public auditor also joins or would oppose at least the governor's suggestion that there be a protest bond or something that a protester would have to put up, as that would have a chilling effect on protest, which each and every protest that an agency decides and which gets appealed to the public auditor and which gets reviewed by the Superior and the Supreme Courts of Guam, the body of law concerning Guam procurement gets solidified, gets clarified, and that is a good process. That process is a very healthy one going on, and we ask, because these concerns raised by the governor in the first veto had been allied, that the legislature pass Bill 20-33. Some of the concerns that were raised by Judge M. Pinko are perhaps valid in some respects. However, the bill, there was a lot of work that did go into it over a long period of time. The bill is in essence a compromise, just like any other bill that goes before the legislature. Does it please any body of government? Absolutely not, hence it's a good compromise. There's a lot in there that the OPA didn't agree with, but understood, that these were important things to get the private sector, for example, satisfied with the bill, or the legislature satisfied with the bill. And here, once again, with the veto, we are trying to get the executive branch satisfied in some respects with the bill. So, but in a few respects, in terms of the OPA and some of the concerns raised by Judge M. Pinko, concerning the administrative review of a emergency declaration that would -- or a move by the executive branch to essentially proceed with the procurement despite a protest, all that provision that he cited concerning the OPA and the court reviewing such a declaration or such a move by the government of Guam to proceed with the procurement despite a protest, that's existing law, and that's all that that law does, looking at the section, is it gives a protester, I guess, the chance to have a hearing, expedited hearing. If the case is just before the agency, that protester has two days to file some action concerning it before the OPA, and all the OPA does at that level is determine the validity of the decision by the agency to set aside the -- or not set aside, but proceed with the procurement to protect substantial interests of the territory. That's all. But it does give the protester the ability to at least have a hearing on that decision by the agency. Likewise, if the protest is pending before the OPA and the government proceeds with the procurement despite the protest and the appeal, the OPA, once again, the protester has the opportunity, while it's pending before the OPA, to have the OPA determine whether or not the government has followed the procedures to proceed with the procurement despite the protest, in essence, to lift the automatic stay. And the Superior Court of Guam has that same power pursuant to statute. That's all it is. It doesn't give the OPA any more power than it had before Bill 20-33. It just recognizes the existing right of a protester to oppose, or at least object to, the move by the government to set aside the automatic stay. That's all it does. Finally, in terms of the OPA and its timelines, I would say that the large number of our appeals over the years that the OPA has been doing procurement appeals are actually decided within about 90 days or so of when they are filed with the OPA. That's actually record-breaking, considering that before the OPA, we didn't have a procurement appeals board. They went straight to court, and of course, it would take six months to a year almost to get a decision. It's taking longer now with the Supreme Court's decision that they have to file a civil action. It would only take about three to six months or so when the appellant's or person seeking judicial review could file a writ of mandate, for example, then the court would decide it faster. Now with a civil case, it kind of tracks the regular civil cases in court. It takes about a year to get a decision, so it does take a little longer. But at the OPA level, they're out within about three months. So it is a fast procedure, and although it's not set forth in law, clearly in the OPA's regulations, it does set forth a requirement that no later than 30 days after the hearing on the appeal, the OPA has to issue its decision, and the OPA has done so in just about all of its cases. For that, I thank you for being heard.
The plan was to slightly give me a little bit more break on that, because not all of our decisions, but certainly within 30 to 33 days, and so we wanted to make it a little bit more liberal, and we have -- we do keep numbers and statistics to show that that is the goal, to decide an appeal from beginning to end within 90 days. Sometimes there are a few that go a little bit longer. I know there's one appeal we have right now that's going longer, because the part -- we're all off-island, and we just can't get to it, but that is the desire, and that has been the practice, and those are in our rules and regulations. Even though it wasn't in law, we had decided to do that time line. Those were rules and regulations at that time that when we had Therese Terlahey as legal counsel, she was the one who drafted those, and they were sent over to the legislature through the Administrative Adjudication Act. And we've just made slight one modification later since that time, and looking again at the rules and regulations, I wanted to give a little bit more area timeframe, you know, because there have been a handful that weren't quite within the 30 days, but certainly that continues to be the goal, to render and to do this expeditiously. And I think most of the appellate's have come before have been satisfied with the timeframe, because it is pretty expeditious. And even though it is not in law, as John pointed out, we put it in our regulations. Thank you.
The auditor says that Section 15, the new Section 5710 is added to Article 12. This essentially deprives the Procurement Policy Office of promulgating regulations. She says, for the first time, and it's not in this bill, she says, "It's specific to this bill." Then if it's specific to this bill, then why isn't it stated in the bill? You know, there's nowhere that it says that. Second...
Is this act in accordance?
Then I missed that, and I read that fairly carefully.
Was this act in accordance?
With the Procurement Policy Board, the reason why the -- actually, the reason why the Procurement Policy Board didn't meet was we had a commitment from the members that were present that they would meet for two hours each Friday to discuss section by section by section the procurement law as it presently stood. Now, I went for one Friday, and there was nobody that came, and then another time, there was still nobody. So the commitment there was what was lacking. It was not because I didn't want to do that, but it was the members just forsake -- forsook the Policy Board. Now, it says here that... Now, it says here that something about the protest bond, the counsel here made reference to it. A protest bond was not in this bill. Well, it was, the, the thing about a protest bond, they say it's a chilling effect on the protests, but it doesn't have a chilling effect. If you put a monetary amount above which they have to put a protest bond, then that, that'll suffice. In one of my earlier testimonies before this board, I had suggested, if the procurement is $250,000 or more, then require a protest bond, because at that stage, or at that amount of money, they, they, the contractors don't really care if they're, they only care about showing that they're right, and they, they'll gladly put up that, I, I think that they'll gladly put up that amount, the protest bond. The protest bond, in putting up $250,000 as the limit at which you, you put it up, is rather innocuous. Most of the large protests is what we're worried about, and, and so this would remedy that. The protest bond will remedy that situation. Now, the statistics, they often, you know, my colleague points out, the statistics show this and that, but the statistics being, how is it, how do we arrive to those statistics? Who is doing the counting? What are exempted from the count? For instance, every, every lawyer can know that if you go before the court, you have a certain amount of time within which to plead your client, but you know that there are exceptions to that, so that amount of time is not counted. So, her, the OPA citing that they're within the 45-day range and all that, that's, that's bogus, because there might be exceptions that we do not know of. And in addition, the fact that, the fact that all parties are off-island, it doesn't mean anything, because they, they, they have to have in their hearing, they have to have some kind of discipline whereby they say, "This is due in such and such a time," or "We meet in such and such a time." It is enforced. It's not to say that this is not, this is not enforced, but it's, it certainly goes to show that there's a leniency here, that they have to tighten up their ship. The right of the protester to oppose the government. We're giving him that right, but we're going, we're, we're bending over backwards, because we are, we're, here, the, in this statute, the public auditor can assess bit costs. Now, in the federal sector, which I'm very familiar with, the bit costs are just the problem of the, of the parties. There's no such thing as assessing bit costs, and that, to me, is, it will encourage more and more protests to be filed. Thank you.
If I could just make a rebuttal on...
Okay. I, I really don't want to get into a, to a debate, so we'll, I probably should not have allowed you to, to rebut. Okay. Senator, did you have any questions? Senator? Vice Speaker?
John, when, you, you mentioned on, on section 15, that this deprives what group of...
The policy office.
The policy office. When was that policy office created?
It was created...
Policy? I thought, I thought that was created from the very beginning when we...
It's been...
Yeah.
I, I understand. What I'm trying to get to is that the statute has been there since before joining the office. And has it met since the governor formed it?
No, the history, there's very little history, but I understand that there was a policy that was very little history. It was not, not continued. It met briefly for about three or four months, and then it was not continued, and then it wasn't resuscitated until...
Historically, I'm not concerned about history. I am concerned about just the recent past, since you assumed responsibility for the policy office.
No, I didn't.
Has it met?
No, I didn't assume responsibility. The chairperson is the, the chairperson is...
Has it met?
The chairperson is the director of administration.
I, I understand, because I remember when you announced it. Has it met since you announced it?
No. We're not gonna get into it, but I'm just saying...
I wanted to offer a compromise. The only reason there was a concern here, and it didn't matter to us who did the regulations, we just, we said, we said AG, or if the policy office wants to take it, if you feel that it's better for the policy, I have no problem. We're just concerned that the regulations be addressed. That's all, and by a body that can do it. That's all we're concerned about. It doesn't matter if it's the OPA, it could be the AG, it could be the policy office, and if he wants to take it, by all means, let him take it on.
But I want it on the record that I, as the former chair of procurement, gave the responsibility of the governor's office to write the procurement, rewrite the procurement statute.
Yes, you did.
And we waited, and we waited, and we waited for a full term.
Yes.
And then, then another term came on, and thankfully, Senator Adda attended a class, and he became interested in it, because I had got, I had... John, it's just that I...
Senator, if I may...
It is taking so long to, to say you don't want them to write it, but you can't get the policy board with Benita to chair it to, to meet, and you can't get the board that you were supposed to oversee to meet every Friday to do something?
The problem here...
It's gotta go somewhere, and it is not going back to the governor's office.
But the problem here is the lack of support, administrative support of the, of the bodies I talked about.
I, I understand, but who has, we don't have control over that. I can't tell anybody over in the administration. You talk about us crossing the line in the, in, in saying who can have an emergency and who isn't. It would be really overstepping for me to insist that the director...
Well, I...
That is the governor's, and that should be it.
No, this is another example of an unfunded mandate, Senator, if I may disagree. An unfun, when you, when you write the statute expecting action to come out of a body, an administrative body at that, you have to have an appropriation with it, because depending on the good graces of such and such person in such and such an office, it does not work.
When the administration wants to do something, they will do it. And they, and they find a way to do it. And we gave them this responsibility, and they did not. And I really am concerned, because we keep moving the, the target on this one. When we sent down the, the original bill, and it was vetoed, there were two objections. Now you're coming back with about 14.
Yes, because this is...
We want something in writing, I, Mr. Chairman, can we get something in writing over the governor's signature, that this is what he wants in the bill, so that we can address it? Because you did an excellent job of amending the two provisions that were of concern in the, in the veto message. And I've been trying to address procurement for 10 years now, and every time, someone moves the target.
But I...
Thank you very much.
May I suggest...
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Senator, if I may respond to that, may I suggest...
Ask them for any comments.
That's, thank you.
It was just a comment.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just, I just want to say that with regards to section 15, that was a point that was raised during the discussions last year, and about the fact that, that the law was being amended, and it's not going to be in sync with the rules and regulations. And so what has actually been done is that the, a set of rules and regulations have already actually been drafted to be, to synchronize with the changes that are being made with the law. But that is going to have to go through the Administrative Adjudication Act. So, everybody's going to have a chance to include the procurement policy board, to take a chance, to take a look at what has been drafted, what is being proposed, and then make its way down here within that 180 days, so that then we can actually fully implement the amended law with respect to chapters nine and 12. And it had nothing to do with, you know, who was going to get power or what. It was, it was basically somebody stepped up during the roundtable and said, "We'll do it." But that was the only person that stepped up. So, that's what we have here, and we actually have a set of rules and regs that will be ready to go, to begin the administrative adjudication process. Now, you gave your testimony, pointing out all the concerns that you have raised. Did you provide, are you going to provide written testimony?
Yes.
Okay. And are you providing that testimony as the, let's see, as, as the, as the administrator for the Veterans, Veterans Office, or in your capacity with the, with the procurement policy board?
In both.
Both.
That doesn't exist anymore. The time lapsed, and it no longer exists.
Then this is just one.
Okay. Well, please, please make sure then that we get your testimony. With respect to, there was, there was discussion, there was issues, a point raised about the protest bond, that was not in this bill, that was not a part of the previous bill, Bill 224. It was mentioned in the governor's veto message that it should be considered, and if it is to be considered, I think that it should be introduced as a standalone bill, whoever wants to introduce that bill, because I certainly am not in support of putting a protest bond in. So, if there's, if there's a senator who's willing to introduce a bill, I think it should be introduced as a standalone bill. But we've got, I, I want to see this thing move forward and, and get some of the changes I guess, other than, other than that, if, if we don't have any other questions, we'll deem public law 20, I mean, Bill 20-33 as having been duly heard, and, and we'll adjourn this public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I wanted to get clarification. Is this a hearing just based on the, on the two objections by the governor, or is it a hearing based on the whole bill?
It's, it's a hearing on the bill, but the bill...